Greetings and welcome from the League of Women Voters of Portland. Today, we have a voter forum for the May 16, 2023 special election for candidates running for the District 3 position on the Multnomah County Commission. I'm Debbie Kay, President of the League of Women Voters of Portland. The League is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to making democracy work. We believe democracy works best and voters are informed about issues and engaged in their communities. We're presenting this forum to give all Multnomah County voters the opportunity to learn more about the three candidates running for District 3 of the Multnomah County Commission. Recordings of this forum will be available on the League's website, l w v p d x dot org, as both videos and podcasts through Election Day, Tuesday, May 16. The League is grateful for the support of the Carolyn Velma Sailing Foundation, the League of Women Voters of Portland Education Fund, the Weiss Foundation, and our media partner, Metro East Community Media. It's now my pleasure to introduce our moderator for this forum, Carolyn Bupert.
Thank you, Debbie. We invited the candidates for Multnomah County Commission District 3 to participate in this forum tonight, and all three have agreed. So we have Ana Del Rosio, Albert Kaufman, and Julia Brim Edwards. The format for this will be as follows. Each candidate will get two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. And then we will ask questions, and they have not received these questions in advance. And each candidate will get 60 seconds to answer the question. The order of questions is determined by a random system that we an alphabet system that we get from the Oregon Secretary of State. And we're asking the candidates to keep to the time limits that we've established. So we'll start with Ms. Del Rosio. Would you like to give your opening statement?
Yes, thank you so much for having me here today. I am Ana Del Rosio. An important part of my history is that I was the first person in my family to be born in this country. But I know that the journey to safety and security does not end here. My neighbors in East Portland are still among those most severely impacted by gun violence, traffic deaths, and lack of housing options. I first ran for office to solve a problem in lack of healthcare access in my neighborhood. The community rallied behind me, and it was because they knew I would fight for them. When I was elected, I made sure one of the first things we accomplished was expanding the availability of healthcare services in our public schools. I've won a lot more since then for our East Portland families, and I was named the 2016 Public Health Hero by the Office of Former County Chair Deborah Cofory for my collaborative work preserving and expanding youth violence prevention programs. I'm running for Multnomah County Commission because District 3, now more than ever, deserves a leader who can fight for communities, not corporations, as we enter an unprecedented period of recovery and growth throughout our region. The issues we must address, housing and homelessness, mental health and addiction, and community safety deserve no less than the best, most qualified, and most accountable leaders at the table. That's me, that's why I'm running for Multnomah County Commission District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards, opening statement, please.
Good evening. I'm Julia Brim Edwards, and I want to thank the League for hosting this candidate forum at a critical time for the county. I'm an East Portlander. This is the place where I grew up, went to public schools, had my first jobs, raised my three kids with Randall, served for nine years on the local school board, and operate my own business. I'm running for the county commission because our home community, which has been a relatively safe, affordable, thriving place to live, is under great stress right now. Crime and gun violence are at record levels, and thousands of individuals are homeless without basic supports, without a clear path to shelter and safety, and ultimately, housing. The county's headed in the wrong direction, and urgent action is needed. The county is in a unique position to improve things, and I'm optimistic we can do that together. I know I can help as a county commissioner by leveraging my skills, my expertise, and my relationships to take on these big problems, as I have for the last 20 years as the community leader. I've demonstrated that I can bring people together, create plans, take action, deliver results, and hold organizations, and myself accountable. There's many examples of how I've done that, including my leadership role in building a coalition between labor, business, and legislators to create the Student Success Act, resulting in a historic investment in our public schools, including all the public school districts in Multnomah County. The county needs to take urgent action on homelessness, mental health access, housing affordability, and community safety. We need to end street camping by working with the city to create more shelter options with basic services that create a path to permanent housing. On community safety, we need more first responder staffing and better funding for the county's district attorney and sheriff's office, so emergencies are responded to quicker, and crimes are investigated and prosecuted. It's time we move to action, and I ask for your vote for county commission.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, opening statement, please.
Thank you, Carolyn, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to my opponents in this race, who both are incredibly articulate and experienced. And I would be happy for any of us to win this race. I decided to run for this office when I read the article in the New York Times featuring Ana and how she had made her pathway to running for this race. That's when I learned about it in January, and by February, I decided to throw my hat into the ring. I've been interested in running for public office for much of my life. I was given the moniker of "first and most likely to become president" by the people in my high school. And ever since, I've been very active politically. I grew up in a labor Zionist youth movement, which taught me interesting information about labor and management issues when I was about 13. I was on my first picket line when I was 13, trying to stop my local supermarket from selling grapes in support of the UFW. And from then on, I've been active politically. I've lived here in Portland for 20 years, and I have fought for everything from keeping trees standing to trying to get gas-powered lawn equipment banned. And it's interesting, of course, right as this has begun, this forum, someone decided a few houses away to mow their lawn and using a gas-powered lawnmower, which I've talked to them about to no avail. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from everyone about your thoughts of how to improve things here in Portland. We have our work cut out for us, and I have some ideas about how to make that go better. Thanks again for having us.
So the next question is, what is the single most pressing problem facing the county? And how would you seek to resolve it if you're elected? And the order will be Ms. Del Rosio, Mr. Kaufman, and Ms. Brim Edwards. So Ms. Del Rosio.
My focus are the issues that are most important to people in Multnomah County today: housing and homelessness, mental health and addiction treatments, and community safety. My number one priority is housing and homelessness. However, it is the convergence of these crises that is the problem we must address most. And this convergence is decades long in the making. What we need is a new direction for our government and a renewed sense of urgency from those in power. Last week, I received a rent increase notice of $209. I rent a small apartment with my two children. Now I have to figure out how to pay more rent with childcare, rising food costs, and monthly bills, or I'll have to move. I share this information because it demonstrates the extent to which I am in touch with the day-to-day realities of people in our county. We need people in office who understand the struggles that communities face and the importance of working earnestly for affordable housing, displacement prevention, and shelter for those who are unhoused. As your next county commissioner, I will work collaboratively with the chair's office, housing advocates, and the new leader in the Joint Office of Homeless Services for the most innovative, responsible pathways forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. I believe that the most pressing issues are probably going to get the most air tonight: homelessness, and addiction, and crime, and gun violence, these type of things. But really, I think the main issue that's coming and is already here, but is coming quickly, we tend to forget about it when it's raining out, we tend to forget about it when it's winter. But I think climate change has to be really top of mind. I think it's the factor that's causing all of the symptoms that we are struggling to work on. And I'm actually quite nervous about whether our society in general is able to deal with the problem. I don't necessarily think we are. And so the problems that we have and that we're facing right now that are right in our face are just the front part of what's behind it. And you can see evidence of that when we experience things like heat domes. And I'm sure getting a chance to talk about this more.
Ms. Brim Edwards.
Yes, so from living in District 3 for a long time and also from listening to my neighbors from all across the district, I know the issues that are top of mind are homelessness, affordable housing, along with mental health access, and safe neighborhoods. And what I would do about it, first of all, the county needs to continue to provide rental assistance to prevent people from falling into homelessness. And we also need to, and I feel this like, take urgent action, work with the city so that we provide a transition so that people can move off the streets and move into shelter and on their journey into permanent supportive housing, where they can get either drug treatment or mental health services. And we need to make sure that we integrate both our supportive housing along with mental health services and drug treatment. In terms of keeping our neighborhoods safer, again, I would advocate for better staffing so that when people call 911, they get a response in a timely and effective way. Also, provide greater support for the district attorney's office and the sheriff's office, so that we have the tools that we can keep our neighborhoods safe. In District 3, some of the, has some of the most impacted neighborhoods by crime.
Thank you. The next question is, what steps does the county need to take toward providing necessary and timely mental health services for all county residents? And the order of the answer will be Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Brim Edwards, and Ms. Del Rosio. So Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. That's a great question. A friend of mine who works for the county, who's been working there for 15 years, just constantly talks to me about how difficult her job is. And she works in the field of mental health. I have a number of friends who are working for the county in that respect. I think it behooves us to start by paying everyone who's a frontline worker in this area a lot more. I feel that people who are doing all sorts of jobs, working in education, working in mental health, in the mental health field, working as EMTs, working, doing elderly care, all of these kind of positions are so much more important and so much more valuable than the money that people are given. And I think if we really want to take this area seriously, that's a big part of what has to happen, is that money needs to flow into the coffers of people who are doing the work. Otherwise, we risk, and I think we're already on the way towards it, of seeing a very stressed-out workforce that looks elsewhere for employment.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards.
Thank you. So the county is the local mental health authority, and for a long time, it's been underfunded, and there's not a functional behavioral health system currently. So urgently, we need to create a better system and a network so that we can expand mental health treatment, especially coming out of COVID and the pandemic. There's ever-increasing needs for mental health treatment, both inpatient and outpatient. I'm going to agree with Albert that it's going to be really important that we have a, that we're able to recruit and retain mental health providers. There's a shortage right now. We need entry-level peer support workers, all, the whole array of mental health providers. And we're going to need to pay them a living wage job, a living wage, to keep them and support them, because that's the way that we're going to actually expand access. We also need to, as we look at shelter and long-term housing, that we integrate both our mental health services with that housing so that people are getting the supportive housing that was promised in the Metro campaign.
Thank you. Ms. Del Rosio.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards is correct that while we will be collaborating across jurisdictions on the housing front, this is uniquely our charge as the public health authority at Multnomah County to make sure we get this right. There is a behavioral health workforce shortage. We also understand that this traditional model that we have of one-to-one clinical treatment is simply not scalable. We must expand the way we traditionally approach mental health treatment beyond one-to-one models, inclusive of group-based therapy, and we must find ways for folks who are unhoused, in distress, in crisis, to receive services where they are currently at the moment. Until we solve the long-term housing supply issue, we must tend to the human element of crisis on our streets. So that means we need safe, temporary shelter as a mental health intervention, safe shelter, and supportive housing programs to keep people housed. We also need to expand treatment for mental health and addiction and tailor interventions to address the known root causes of mental health and addiction. The opposite of addiction is community or connection, where we see robust healthcare systems and economic security, we see low levels of mental illness and addiction as well.
Thank you all. The next question, what changes, if any, would you support in the allocation of responsibilities between the county commission and Metro? And the order will be Ms. Brim Edwards, Ms. Del Rosio, and Mr. Kaufman. So Ms. Brim Edwards.
So currently, the county and Metro have a whole host of places where they collaborate. The one that I think is most important right now, which is our biggest challenge as a region, as the county relates to homelessness and housing affordability. And currently, the, like, the Metro provides funding to the counties in the region for, so that we can provide supportive family services. And I think they actually, we actually have the balance right, where they allocate the funds. The county needs to have a plan, and I think there should be a lot more urgency at the county about spending the resources that we're getting from Metro. And then there's a metro oversight, so that there's this third party looking at whether the effectiveness of what Multnomah County is doing, what Washington County, what Clackamas County is doing, and little gauging, are we hitting the targets, are we being effective, are we using those resources that Metro has provided us to really provide services to those that are homeless? And are we actually moving forward, or are we not making progress?
Thank you. Ms. Del Rosio.
Thank you. We absolutely need regional solutions to regional problems. At Metro, we need to work collaboratively on the housing arena, and we need to formalize those collaborations. There's greater accountability now that we have spending to be accountable for with Metro. We must be open, transparent on how those dollars are being used, what's working, what is not working. And, you know, we need to make sure we hold all elected leaders accountable for spending from Metro dollars. I'm very proud to have earned the endorsement of Metro Council President Lynn Peterson, as well as Councilor Simpson and Gonzalez, because they know that I will bring my regional approach to bear when it comes to solving the crises before us. But there are other ways beyond just housing and homelessness that the county can really maximize impact in collaboration with Metro. That includes land use, that includes housing supply, that includes programming for people of color and low-income folks to really access more green space. So there's a lot of opportunity to have more impact together, and I will make sure to do that as a candidate with the most endorsements from elected and appointed officials in this race.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I think the answers that have been given so far are great. I'll have a little something to add, but I do want to do something that I have been wanting to do in every possible forum, and that is bring a little music into the event. I'm not going to sing a whole song for everyone, but I just wanted to have a few musical notes come into our discussion, as I feel like we're probably not going to get a question about the arts, and I'm an artist and a musician. That said, I'd like to see Metro and the city and the county working together cross-jurisdictionally in ways that they're not yet, and that would be something that I would bring to focus on. I, like many people, I'm probably curious to know exactly what Metro does much of the time. In my interactions with them around land use issues, it was very hard to get them to the table. So I, just like I'd like to see the city and county working together closer, I'd like to see Metro at the table as well. And I think other people are interested in seeing that as well.
Thank you. Our next question is another one about coordination. And it is, do you see opportunities for better coordination of policies between the county and Portland, and if so, in what respects? And the order will be Ms. Del Rosio, Ms. Brim Edwards, Mr. Kaufman.
Yes, there certainly are opportunities, and I believe those are being seized more and more every day under new leadership in the chair's office. When the stakes are high, and they are high, we cannot afford anything less than full collaboration and diplomacy. I'm currently enrolled in the number one nationally-ranked program for dispute resolution at Pepperdine Caruso School of Law, because that's how important it is to me to hone these skills in collaboration, multi-jurisdictional collaboration, so we can get this right. My track record of collaborative leadership is part of what will help move District 3 forward. Over 150 endorsers agree that I'm the leader Multnomah County needs because I can hit the ground running. And the crises we face, especially on housing and homelessness with the joint office with the city, cannot wait. I'm the only candidate endorsed by sitting commissioners, cities, sitting city and county commissioners across the state, and leaders at every single level of government, from school board to Congress. Our regional problems need regional solutions. We must create the bridges and partnerships with today's government that we need to build a better future for Southeast and East Portland.
Ms. Brim Edwards.
I think it's absolutely critical that the city and the county collaborate together, because we're not going to get the job done either in silos. We're only going to get it done together, whether it's public safety, where you have the county having some responsibilities and the city having some, or it's homelessness and housing. We have joint responsibilities. I firmly believe that the joint office needs to actually reflect its name, be a joint office, because we need to take action together. And unless we agree that we're going to take action together, we are not going to solve these problems. We can't be fragmented in silos or pointing fingers at each other and blaming somebody else. We absolutely need to be at the table, and we start taking action. And we need to hold each other accountable, not to blame each other, but actually demand accountability from the other entities and from ourselves. We have the resources, the voters have been very generous with providing resources, and we need to combine them together so that we can solve our problems together. But we need to take action now, and we need to take it together.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Right. I think we're all in agreement that the different area governments should be working closer together. And this is something that if you're watching this video right now, this is a place where you can actually weigh in. You don't have to wait for this election to, you know, wait for one of us to move on this issue. You can be demanding this from area leaders. People should be peppering the city council, the county council, and Metro with emails, with phone calls, and demanding that these folks work together. They shouldn't, we shouldn't have to wait any longer for the city and the county to get their heads together on homelessness. There are plenty of examples of how to solve some of the problems that we have, but we're never going to get there if we don't work together. And like I said in the beginning of this comment, if you are hearing my voice, I want you to turn off this video and get on your email and write to the people who you've already elected to start working together more closely.
Thank you. You're listening to the Candidates for Multnomah County Commission District 3, a voter forum brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Portland. Our next question, what are the county interests, if any, in the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program? And the order will be Ms. Brim Edwards, Mr. Kaufman, and Ms. Del Rosio. Ms. Brim Edwards.
Yeah, I do believe that the county has an interest in the Interstate Bridge Replacement. It's going to be one of the largest capital construction projects probably in the next 10 years in the region, and we need to get it right. And frankly, we need to get it right for a whole host of reasons. But one of the main ones is Oregon's economy and the region's economy depends on having efficient and effective transportation routes. And currently, we don't have that. It's been known for a long time, and we've had bottlenecks, and it's making commerce slower and impacting our economy. So absolutely, the county has an interest. We have an interest as a partner, not the driver. And I think we have, we also have an interest in that we need to make sure that Multnomah County taxpayers don't have a disproportionate burden, as they have in some of the other large projects, that everybody pays their fair share, not just the Multnomah County taxpayers and drivers.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. By the way, I was just being clever by encouraging people to turn off the video and send in emails. You're welcome to continue watching. I'm sure this will be worth your time to hear what everyone has to say. I'm a big fan of the folks that are bringing forth the right bridge, right place, right time effort right now. The county commissioners obviously are integral as participants in the discussion. As they are integral in discussions about all sorts of things, even things that are outside of the county. I've worked on issues in Salem, where county commissioners came and testified on statewide legislation. And sometimes it was very tangential to the work that they do representing people in their district. That said, I actually would be all for getting tolling starting immediately if that is needed. There's actually quite a lot that we could be doing now to prepare ourselves for the eventual effort to build this bridge.
Thank you. Ms. Del Rosio.
I agree the county does have an interest in the Interstate Bridge Replacement Project. When you think about transportation and transportation infrastructure, this is essential to make sure our economy is thriving, to get people to and from. It's also important to make sure that we're balancing environmental considerations and looking at air quality, really thinking about how we're balancing the need for folks to get to and from in their traditional vehicles, and also bike lanes, also transit lanes. How are all those competing interests being negotiated and making sure we're coming out with a plan that serves the needs of the majority? Also, this is an important job-creating project. When we are thinking about family wage jobs in the region, how is the county part of creating project labor agreements and community benefits agreements that maximize the impact for all involved in this project? That's what I will be doing as commissioner, is making sure that in my office we have liaisons on the economic and labor fronts to make sure that this project happens in a process that is in integrity with our values and that the outcome also is integrity as well.
Thank you. Our next question is, what actions, if any, would you support concerning the management of the Multnomah County Animal Shelter? And the order will be Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Del Rosio, and Ms. Brim Edwards. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Well, this is an area that obviously, the animal shelter in Multnomah County being involved in it, that I'm, I know that the county has lots of tentacles in lots of different directions. And I'm very curious as to whether or not the county should be involved in this work. I recognize that there's a lot of criticism of how the county is handling animal services and shelters, and, you know, animals are being euthanized, and some people are very upset about that. This may be an area where we've reached too far, and I would be curious, I would be interested in having a discussion about possibly outsourcing this type of work and having the county be able to focus on less, less issues and more concertedly.
Thank you. Ms. Del Rosio.
Thank you. In so many ways, I do view the county as the heart of our local government, animal shelters being part of a vibrant direct service organization. When we think about animals and the way that they function in our society, the role that they play, they are part of many folks' families, they are part of an emotional support role that is important in the broader healthcare ecosystem. Many people that are experiencing emotional health issues or many Many people that are experiencing emotional health issues or many people with disabilities count on animals as emotional support, as emotional supports. And what I'm learning and understanding is that particularly throughout our shelter system and our housing pipeline, we lack sufficient spaces for people who do count animals as emotional supports to accompany them in the varying parts of the housing support process. So we need to make sure that particularly for people with disabilities, shelters are able to sponsor people with disabilities to receive social security, but they need that address and a place to live. And when we are able to accommodate that for pets, accommodate that for families to be able to be kept together, including the pets, we maximize the impact that we are able to deliver for folks who are experiencing distress, experiencing disability, and experiencing housing at that intersection.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards. Unmute, please.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. What actions, if any, would you support concerning the management of the Multnomah County Animal Shelter?
So I read through the recent audit and by the county auditor, and it was pretty concerning. Staff and volunteers have been raising issues for quite some time, and it sounds like they were exacerbated by the conditions with the pandemic. But it was actually hard, as a longtime dog and cat owner and somebody who loves animals, it was heartbreaking to read parts of the audit because of what, again, partly because of the pandemic, but also potentially because of some management issues. So I'm, I'm a big fan of audits. I think I'm looking forward to the county commission reviewing the steps that the staff and management are taking to implement the audit recommendations because that's the point of audits, to make our, the operations better, and hopefully that will result in better treatment of the animals that are there and, and more humane. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to the, the audit, audit being implemented. And if I'm a county commissioner, I'll ask lots of questions if it hasn't been implemented.
Okay. Thank you. All. Next question. What actions, if any, should the county commission take concerning the current staffing of public defenders? And the order will be Ms. Del Rosio, Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Brim Edwards, Ms. Del Rosio.
The public defenders, public defenders play an important role in making sure that we have a safe community. And what I'm understanding is that we lack sufficient number of public defenders. The consequence of not having enough public defenders is that the people are, their cases are overloaded. We're not able to retain or promote individuals to the extent that is necessary to maximize the impact of that work. The DA is needing to make sure that the budgets that are provided year after year are actually sufficient and enough to meet the need. We cannot deliver justice and accountability if we don't have enough staff to make sure that everyone gets the zealous representation that they need and they deserve. So it will be my job to work in collaboration with the commissioners to really understand what the DA is meeting as part of the fabric of our public safety infrastructure, what the sheriff is needing to balance out and make sure that at every level of service delivery the county is responsible to provide, we have a safety plan, and that plan includes sufficiently funded public defenders.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I think this question sort of ties in with some of the other issues that we talked about earlier, where people who are working in this capacity are not being treated fairly. They're not being paid well. And so, you know, people who come out of law school and are all starry eyed and want to be public defenders can only do it so long, and then they have to get real and figure out how they're going to pay back their student loans. And so, once again, it really comes down to paying people what they're worth, and it's a competitive market as well. So that would be, my job would be to work with other commissioners to make sure that, I don't know if you call these folks front line workers, but let's call them that and make sure that they are paid adequately.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards.
Yep. The state has a responsibility for providing funds for the public defenders, and if they haven't been provided the funds needed, which we currently have a shortage, not only of public defenders, partially because of pay, but for a whole host of other reasons, because the state has not provided the funding that's been needed. We're seeing people being released, we're seeing cases being dismissed, we're seeing people who have been charged with crimes living in limbo because they haven't had a public defender assigned them. So on all fronts, it's not good for our, our justice system to not be able to have an efficient and effective way to bring cases forwards and for people to have their cases resolved because they, and all because they haven't had a, a public defender. This is a state responsibility. I've talked to the governor about it. I've also talked to the Multnomah County DA about the need, about how we can better advocate with our state legislators and also, again, directly advocate with the governor to provide help because it's, there's only a couple of counties that have this issue, and Multnomah County and Washington County are two of the top two that need funding from the state in order so that we have the ability to efficiently run our court system.
Thank you. The next question is, what role, if any, do you see for the county commission in the county election division's efforts to increase voter understanding of the new county charter and ranked choice voting? Do you want me to read that again? What role, if any, do you see for the county commission in the county election division's efforts to increase voter understanding of the new county charter and ranked choice voting? And the order of answer will be Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Brim Edwards, and Ms. Del Rosio. So Mr. Kaufman.
Sure. Thank you. Well, I've been very excited that our community has chosen to be forward-thinking and choose ranked choice voting for future elections. Last night, I was at a meeting of the Gray Panthers, and I happened to be sitting also with the new city auditor, and we got into a long discussion about how the state and the county and the city all need to begin figuring out how to fly in the same direction on this issue, because there's a good chance that we'll be having ranked choice voting statewide as well. And so I do think the county has some responsibility for educating people in the community about how the new system is going to work. And I think it's going to be a challenging experience for all of us to figure out how it is going to work. I think we still have a little bit of time left to figure it out, and hopefully we'll use that wisely.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards.
So I have a sort of two separate answers on this. I do think the county commission has a role to play in terms of educating the public and sharing information in non-traditional ways, and we need to lose the jargon and the acronyms in, in informing them about the new charter changes. I think that's very important. So both the county commission, but also elections division, the staff have a role. In terms of rate, rate choice voting, I think that would be better to be a responsibility and be led by the elections division. I think anytime you have elected officials telling people about voting and trying to, and explaining it, there'll be a perception that it is maybe with a particular slant or biased. And I'm not saying that would happen, but I just, I think it would be better coming from the elections division. People trust the elections division, and it's going to be confusing because we have two different systems between the county and the city. And, but I do think that the, the elections division has a huge role to play in educating voters.
Thank you. Ms. Del Rosio.
Thank you. I was honored to be one of the tri-chairs of the most recent Multnomah County Charter Review Commission. So I'm very intimate with the changes that are proposed and that were approved by voters when it comes to the new county charter. One thing I will flag is that unlike the city's charter review process, the county's process is less visible, it is less publicized, it is less funded, and that is to the detriment of all in the county who, I believe, have a vested interest in making sure that there are a lot of outward communications, external outreach and engagement efforts to inform voters about what the changes proposed are and what the changes passed are. So that would be one thing I would look at towards the future through the Office of Community Involvement. How can we really support a process that is robust and as, as open and transparent as possible? When it comes to language justice, I believe the county has a special role to play, similarly to our school districts, in providing information in target languages that are among the most spoken in our districts. That is a key way that we get folks involved, that is a key way that we ensure civil rights are respected. I also think there's an opportunity for democracy education in partnership with these schools, United Neighborhoods programs, the county administers. We work with populations of students through, in K-12, who are learning about different areas academically, socially, emotionally, and we stand to make sure that democracy education is part of these efforts as well. I'm proud to be endorsed by Next Up Action Fund as one of the democracy promoting organizations in our county.
Thank you. Our next question is, what changes, if any, would you support in the policies and administration of the Joint Office of Homeless Services? And the order answer will be Ms. Brim Edwards, Ms. Del Rosio, and Mr. Kaufman.
So as I said earlier, I think one of the key things is to actually make the joint office a joint office. They're getting ready to renegotiate the terms, and I think the city and the county being equal partners, because the county, the city has a lot to bring to the table. And so does, so does the county. And so we need to be really equal partners. So we're brading together our budgets, our programs, all the things we're doing to support the same group of people. So again, much more closer collaboration. I'm excited about the new head of the joint office. I think he has a systems, I've worked with him for a long time. He has a systems background. He's action oriented, which is what I think needs to happen. But again, I think we're all gonna, we're gonna succeed together or fail separately. So again, the joint office needs to be truly a joint office.
Ms. Del Rosio.
Thank you. I agree that we need greater accountability and transparency and make sure that the resulting reforms that we make to how that office is administered are based on the results of recent audits that have been conducted in both the city and the county's offices related to the results and the impact that that joint office has been able to make thus far. We need longer term agreements with the city to give us enough of a runway to actually get things done. We need a more clear division of roles and responsibilities. We need a robust way to keep the public continually informed, really building on the chair's existing data task force to make sure that we have real time dashboard style reporting to the public about, you know, the human impact, how many people are moved off the streets, how many people, how many beds are filled, but with people, and making sure that we're understanding how we're preventing the problem from getting worse and how we're dealing with the need that exists on the streets today. I would build on what we're learning from other jurisdictions across the country, not having to reinvent the wheel, because we know that many of the problems that we face are also nationwide. So making sure that we're preventing insular responses and solutions and learning from the best across the nation.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I haven't really heard an opportunity to share a couple of ideas that I have around houselessness, so I'm going to offer them here. One is, if we're really serious about solving the issues that we have in front of us, I'm, I'm a little nervous about our capacity to actually do that. If we haven't been able to really make a dent in the problems, in fact, that you seem to be getting worse over the last couple of years, even though I have a lot of faith in some of our leadership, I'm wondering a couple of things. One, if it might be time to reach out for help at a higher level, if we might want to be bringing in some folks from the federal government, FEMA, to come and assist us. Two, I think if we're really serious about this issue, we should consider shutting down Airbnb for the time being. Before Airbnb was running in this town, we just didn't have as many of the problems. I think that's a possible solution or something we should at least look at. And three, I'm looking at the Walmarts that are closing, and I'm wondering if those might be utilized in a way to shelter people. And I've got some ideas about how that could happen, and I would like to flesh those out.
Thank you. Thank you. Which, next question. What changes, if any, would you support in the county's preschool for all program, approved by county voters in November of 2020, as it scales up to expected universal access in 2030? And the order will be Ms. Del Rosio, Ms. Brim Edwards, and Mr. Kaufman. So Ms. Del Rosio.
This is one of the programs that our county ought to be most proud of. It is a national model to really meet the need that thus far has, you know, we've had childcare deserts in the county thus far, and this is one of the important ways that we will be addressing the needs of working families and working parents. When it comes to implementation of preschool for all, we need to make sure that we are, again, being very open with the public about how we're progressing in setting up the initial infrastructure for this program to really take off. As a program that is designed to have generational impacts, it will take generations to really truly appreciate the cost savings that we're seeing by investing at this age in service delivery, cost savings down the road. But right now, we need to make sure that we are creating high quality, affordable, culturally relevant, and specific programming to meet the needs of our three and four year olds long-term, to make sure that we are hiring enough workers and paying them a family wage, to make sure that we are really supporting the needs of parents of all kinds of backgrounds and all kinds of types of traditional and untraditional work hours, to make this program as effective and impactful as it can be. I'm proud of it. It will be my job as District Three Commissioner to make sure that we are meeting the needs of an under 18 population in our county and our district as well.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards. Unmute, please.
So we know that early education and the preschool years are critical for students to be successful later when they, they transition to kindergarten and sets them up for a lifetime of education success. Super important, the data shows that, especially for students of, of color and students who might not have an opportunity to, their parents to send them to another, to preschool to be able to pay for it. So it's absolutely critical, and it's somebody who has served on the Portland, who serves on the Portland Public School Board. Currently, we're the largest preschool provider through Head Start in the county. So we're looking forward to the county bringing online more capacity, because we know that means more students are going to be served. It's going to be very important that we both build capacity within the system so that we can serve more students. But we also need to keep an eye on, since this is something that the taxpayer has approved a tax, we need to be able to continuous, to be able to show transparently how much each of those slots cost, what kind of results we're getting, how many students we're serving. It has a somewhat of a slow start, so I'm hoping that accelerates, and that'd be something that I'd be asking questions about, because, you know, we don't want money sitting in the bank, we want students to be served.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Yes, thank you. I have been a huge proponent for increasing funding for education across the board for our students and our schools my whole life. To me, education is really the key to a decent life on our planet. And so I'm, have been very excited to see this program moving forward. Again, I think it comes down to making sure that we are funding the programs adequately, that we are paying the people who are leading the effort to raise children and hang out with three and four year olds. And those folks from my earliest days are generally not paid that well. And so, once again, we're going to be in a fight for people to get paid to do this work, and it's the most important work. Teaching and being part of the educational system, I think, is some of the most important work that needs to be done in our society. And so I look forward to watching this program succeed and helping it in any way I can.
Thank you. So in your opening statements, each of you said why you were running for this office and a little bit about yourself, and then a little bit about what your skills and interests and experience is, are to qualify you for this position. But I thought we'll sort of end it before opening statement, of closing statements, we'll have an extra minute, each of you can just add whatever you would like in terms of your particular qualifications, skills, interests in running for this office. And the order will be Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Del Rosio, and Ms. Brim Edwards. Mr. Kauf.
Thank you. Well, for the last 20 years, I have been a community organizer in our, in our town, and I have been super frustrated at the difficulty we have in getting some small achievable things accomplished. I somewhat came to this election hoping to really just get a ban on gas powered leaf blowers. Now, you know, my interest has grown and my understanding of our county has grown greatly through this exercise of running for this. greatly through this exercise of running for this office. And I'm, even my mother is excited by some new vigor that I have in my life and and new excitement for life that I have. I think that people who are voting for us are voting for our minds and for our passion and for our hearts. And I bring that along. If anyone looks at my endorsement list, you will see a number of people who are very enthusiastic about me serving. So I look forward to hopefully doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Del Rosio.
Thank you. And this is the minute on our qualifications before the closing, is that correct?
Yes. Then you get an extra two minutes for the closing.
Thank you. As former policy staff to current Chair Vega Peterson, I know the intricacies of our county government and what it takes to collaborate and pull levers to get things done. A district level commissioner needs to be able to bring other elected leaders along to pass innovative policies and responsible budgets. And a commissioner for East Portland needs to be able to represent constituents on both sides of 82nd Avenue. I am the candidate in this race with the broadest backing of elected and appointed leaders. And I have the directly relevant Multnomah County specific experience to get things done. My official tenure at the county precedes that of any sitting commissioner, including the chair. And my deep institutional knowledge will be an asset as the board prepares to lose half its members to term limits next year. I'm proud to have earned the endorsements of eight current and former county commissioners, including two chairs, because they know that I'm the candidate best prepared to lead our county forward in 2023 and beyond.
Ms. Brim Edwards.
So the experience I'm going to bring is, I'm going to bring East Portland values and three decades of experience of living, working, raising a family in East Portland, going to school there. I'm also going to bring thirty years of policymaking and legislative experience at the state, local, the federal level. But more importantly, I, not only do I know how legislative processes work, but I've actually gotten results. Put, put coalitions together to really make some big changes. I was a key architect of the Student Success Act, the pack, passage and of the Portland Public Schools nationally recognized climate policy. I chaired the, the school bond for that recently passed that was the largest in state history. And the other thing is, the other thing I'll bring is nine years of, on policymaking and hard work on, on the Portland School Board. It's the largest district in the state. We serve fifty thousand students. We have grappled with huge issues and I've always been there when PPS has been in crisis to get them back on track and I'll do that again with the county.
Thank you. You're listening to the Candidates for Multnomah County Commission, District Three, and a Voters Forum brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Portland. Now we're into closing remarks. Thank you all for answering those questions. And you'll each get two minutes to make whatever closing remarks you and the order will be Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Brim Edwards, and Ms. Del Rosio. So Mr. Kaufman.
Well, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for hosting us this evening. And to my candidate opponents, who, both of whom have shared a lot of wisdom this evening and also passion for the work ahead for whomever gets elected. I wanted to reach out to those of you who are watching, to you who are watching, and encourage you to figure out ways that you can move us all towards good results. I think too often we look to city and county leaders for bringing us big wins or solving our problems. But I really think that this is going to take all of us. And so what's something that you can do to make things better? Is it talking to a neighbor? Is it getting involved in city repair and painting an intersection? Is it learning how to communicate with the people around you in a language that's not yours? I think there's a lot of things that we all can do as individuals to move our city and our county into a better place. And I think that too often we are expecting someone else to do the work for us. I also wanted to reach out to men. I think there is a tendency in our community and in our world for men to vote for men. And I want you to really seriously consider not just leaning on that crutch. I want you to think about who in this group of three would best represent you and who, you know, who flow to both the most. And not just to sit back and make a simple choice by gender. I'm, I'm very pleased to be here amongst this group of people. It's an honor and it's a real pleasure. And I'm looking forward to every day of the rest of this campaign because each day I'm learning something new. And I'm excited to continue public service, no matter how many votes I get. That said, please do vote for me and you can learn more about my candidacy at my website, albertkoffman.com.
Thank you. Ms. Brim Edwards, it's your turn.
I want to thank the league again for tonight's forum and Albert, for you for being part of the conversation. We have serious problems in this community and the county has an important role to play in fixing them. Over the past year, I've heard from many of my community members about their concerns and their hopes and their belief that the county is not on the right track or headed in the right direction. I'm the candidate who can help the county get back on track and I have a strong record of building coalitions to tackle big issues, taking action and delivering results and accountability. I'll bring a fresh and critical perspective to the county as I'm not a county political insider. And I'm not the only candidate, and I'm the only candidate in this race who has reviewed and approved public budgets of more than a billion dollars and embedded accountability and auditing into public systems to improve services and outcomes to our community. I'll always elevate the concerns and ideas of community members and local businesses from District Three as they often don't believe they've been heard by county government. Because of my record of getting results, I've been endorsed by a diverse group of leaders, community members, as well as lake, labor and local businesses. My supporters include three Oregon governors, including two who live in District Three, the Portland Firefighters Association, IBEW Local Forty Eight, US Congresswoman Andrea Salinas, former Multnomah County Auditor Gary Blackbird, numerous state legislators and community elders such as former state senators Margaret Carter and Avell Gordley. You can see my whole list of endorsers on my website, www.julia-brim-edwards.com. I hope you'll join my endorsers and vote for me in the May sixteenth election so I can work with the rest of the county commission to get us all back on track. Thank you.
Ms. Del Rosio.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to be part of this forum tonight. I have the experience, record of accomplishments and vision to meet the complex challenges we face and help lead District Three forward. I'm known for bringing people together to get results on issues that matter most. And that's why I have the broadest and deepest coalition of organizations and community leaders in this race who know I'm the best person to represent District Three. A hundred and fifty endorsers agree, from the Oregon State Council for Retired Citizens to the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, to Teamsters Thirty Seven. That I'm the one to make a difference in our community. My check record is as a trailblazer. I was one of the first people of color on the ballot in a majority minority school district. I helped spearhead the first racial justice initiative at the board level in David Douglas to make sure all students received the highest quality education possible, no matter where they came from or what zip code they lived in. As Executive Director of Oregon Futures Lab, I expanded my work on diversity and inclusion to include public offices throughout the state of Oregon because we know that the best policies and budgets come from having a diversity of perspectives at the table. The problems we face are decades long in the making. If we're going to get different outcomes, we need different leaders at the table. That's why I'm running for Multnomah County Commission because District Three deserves a leader willing to disrupt the status quo and advance the best possible solutions. While our government has long been run by special interests and corporate lobbyists, I'm a leader who comes from the community and is accountable to the community. I'm the clear progressive choice, the candidate with the broadest and most diverse backing of organizations and leaders. And I would be honored to earn your vote and to represent you as the next Multnomah County Commissioner for District Three.
Thank you all for your thoughts and your ideas and your willingness to serve our community. So we'll close out through Debbie Kay.
Thank you all very much. This was a wonderful program. I learned a great deal and I appreciate all of your interest in public service. Thank you for participating and making time to do so. Watchers and listeners, please share this forum recording with your family and friends. We all need to be informed voters. This recording and other information about this and other races are available online at votefouroneone.org, now through Election Day, Tuesday, May sixteenth. Ballots will be mailed to all registered voters starting April twenty seventh. The last day to register is April twenty fifth. As with all Oregon elections, it is a mail-in only ballot. And ballots are due by eight PM on Tuesday, May sixteenth. Postmarks now count. And make sure that your ballot therefore is postmarked with no postage required by Tuesday, May sixteenth. Or find a drop box near you by checking votefouroneone.org or your Multnomah County Voters pamphlet. If you wish to vote in person, again, check your voters pamphlet for information on how to do so. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit membership organization. We hope this forum was meaningful to you and we welcome you to join or contribute again at l w v p d x dot o r g. This is the League of Women Voters of Portland President Debbie Kay. Thank you for watching or listening. Please be an informed voter and remember, your vote counts.